Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
It is five minutes after seven of our hour. Welcome to the special town meeting of the town of Millville on November the 30th, 2016. Madam Town Clerk, would you attest to how many people we have as quorum, please?
We have over fifty people here today.
Could you get a more accurate figure for me and just hold it, please? We have more than fifty now.
We do have more than fifty.
And that we have over fifty people here, we do have a quorum, and can conduct business. Madam Town Clerk, do you attest to the service of the warrant on November the 16th, 2016?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, so attest to the posting and serving of the warrant. Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman, the Board of Selectmen, would you introduce your board, please?
Yes, to the left is Jennifer Dean, she's co-chair of the Board of Selectmen. To my right is our county administrator, and tonight we have one thorn between two rows.
Mr. O'Leary, would you introduce your board? I see you're missing somebody. No, he's out here, I know he is.
We're missing, we're missing one. I'm Paul Lett, to my right is Brian Pacheco, and to his right is Erica Lee, our newest member. Absent right now is Mike Foster.
Okay. And I'd like to welcome two people, I think we've got it before. Our town administrator, Ms. Jennifer Callahan, and I am so glad that she is on our side and in our town. We couldn't have asked for a better person with the knowledge and experience that she has to help us conduct our business and move our town forward. I also would like to welcome my newest member of the Finance Committee. Thank you very much for volunteering. We appreciate your dedication to the town, and we look forward to many years of service. I don't want to give it to anybody else. All right, we also have Ms. Barbara St. Andre, our town council, down here. Anyone else that we need to introduce? We do have a new town planner. If you'll give me your name, please.
Hillary Carney.
Hillary Carney, welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you in the future of our town and going moving forward.
Mr. Moderator, can I just also inform the audience that another member of the Board of Selectmen is halfway between Central Street and the town meeting and is going to be here promptly, and that's Mr. Roland Barrett.
I don't hear him. He's not here? Get that on count. All right, let's get started, ladies and gentlemen, if you're ready.
Moderator. Can I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Yes, you do. Well, everybody just stand and rise to face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir, for reminding me. Here we go. We'll move forward with Article One. Article One, authorize lease agreement and funds for relocation of municipal operations to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease all or a portion of a certain real property and the improvements thereon located at 290 Main Street, Millville, assesses map number 119-19-0 for such period of years and upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall determine to be appropriate. And further, to transfer from stabilization account a sum of money or improvements to said real property for the cost for the initial year of said lease and for expenses related to relocation of town offices to such property. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate this article or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator. Mr. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I believe you have a motion.
Yes, I do. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease all or a portion of a certain real property and improvements thereon located at 290 Main Street, Millville, assesses map number 119-19-0 for such period of years and upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall determine to be appropriate. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate this article.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made by the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, so proposal seconded by Ms. Wayne. Discussion, anybody have any questions? Yes, ma'am, come down, please. Identify yourself at the microphone and your address.
Hello, Cindy Walsh, 31 Lorrie Way. Where is 290 Main Street? I'm sure I'm not the only one that doesn't know where that address is.
That is the old Millville American Legion Post 411, right on 122. Are you familiar with that building?
I am.
There you go. Anybody else who is not familiar with that building? Any other questions for discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Tower Larkin, 46 Central Street. I just was curious, is there a dollar amount that might be associated with this?
Not right now, we're just on this article. Any dollar amounts will come up later in one of the other articles.
Okay, so because it says stabilization account, transfer money from it?
No, we're not, we're not, the motion does not include any dollar amount or any transfers or anything. All it does, the motion is moving to give the Board of Selectmen the authority to go into and sign any and all lease agreements. That's all it does.
It calls out stabilization, that's what I'm just questioning.
Not in the motion.
Not in the motion. Not in the motion.
No, ma'am. That was in the Article One, for the general publication, to alert residents that this is what's going to be happening, but there is no dollar amount right now. And no money transfers, at all. Any other questions, discussions? There being none, I call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Okay. I'm wanting to interrupt here just for a second, because I've noticed, gentlemen, you're well aware, in my six years, I've never allowed anyone to wear a hat in this building on your town meeting. Please remove your hats. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Article Two, replenish finance reserve fund from stabilization to see if the town will vote to transfer $35,000 from the stabilization account to be added to the Finance Committee Reserve Fund for fiscal year 2017.
Mr. Moderator? I'm sorry.
Yes.
You didn't declare that last vote.
Yeah, I had it. I did declare, and it is a vote. Thank you very much for reiterating. Let me start overall with Article Two. Replace finance reserve fund from stabilization to see if the town will vote to transfer $35,000 from the stabilization account to be added to the Finance Committee Reserve Fund for fiscal year 2017. Voted under Article 11 of the May 9th, 2016 Annual Town Meeting or take any other action in relation thereto. There is a motion to be made. Mr. Foster?
I'm second.
Erica's going to go.
I'm passing over Article Number Two.
There's a motion, there's a motion to move, to move pass over Article Number Two. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? What that means is, we are passing over this article, we're not going to vote on it, and it's not, any, no action will be taken on this article whatsoever. So if we don't take any action on it, nothing can be done. Everybody understand that?
Striking.
Any discussion? I call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare.
Could you please tell me the sentence?
I didn't mean.
All o'leat. So that you know, I have instructed our town clerk to interrupt me at any time to the street tonight, and she, she has to record all of the numbers and all of the votes and everything. So when I get going, as you can see, I move. So thank you for staying in here. Okay, Article Number Three. Establish townwide capital accounts to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $165,000 into a new account entitled Townwide Capital or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. O'Leary, do you have a motion?
Yep, I moved that the town vote to raise an appropriate sum of $165,000 into a new account entitled Townwide Capital.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary, would you please, could you explain why we're doing this, what this is about? Got you.
Well, I don't know whether the town administrator speaks for where the money's coming from.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and to the Chairman of the Finance Committee, who with their committee had actually unanimously supported this particular article, as did the Capital Planning Committee and as did the Board of Selectmen. This is an article that was presented on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and also the administration in, in an effort to be able to take the one-time proceeds from the recent sale of a declared surplus fire equipment apparatus in which we sold and garnered $165,000 for. In relation to that, we also purchased a different piece of equipment that was very important to our fire department for both training purposes and, more importantly, for being able to serve as the public in the future. That particular vehicle is a different vehicle that also needs repairs, and we recognize that this particular townwide capital fund, because we don't have one, would be a way in which we can look at not just the issue for repairing and restoring a piece of fire equipment, but more importantly, for any kind of large capital expense in the future. That is still governed by all of the bylaws that we have in place, but it would give us an opportunity to declare it as part of a one-time revenue source that goes into an actual account that can be used for items that are declared major capital expenditures. And so if we did not do this, we would not be able to access any of these funds for another year until it was declared part of our free cash. And of course, that's not something that was part of any kind of plan when we were actually selling the piece of fire equipment. So it's really an accounting measure, but it's an accounting measure that is used for a specific purpose, and that is for townwide capital expenditures. And that's why we're putting it into an account, and we've also been advised by our financial team to do that as well.
Any questions or discussion?
I heard a motion.
Now, let's take it. Okay. Somebody's name, or hand up, come down, please.
I'm just looking for an explanation. If we're asked to raise and appropriate the $165,000, and then in the explanation it says the account is being established with the one-time money generated by the recent sale of a capital item, the fire truck, and that's $165,000. So if it's already there, why are we raising and appropriating?
I can answer that question. Actually, it's a, it's a good accounting question, and by municipal finance and accounting measures, our town accountant has declared that anything that comes in as a one-time revenue is also considered part of the general fund. And so when they say that, it's not that we're actually raising and appropriating more, what it is, is declaring it as it is, but we're actually putting it in an account so that it can actually be accessed. Otherwise, we would have to wait for an entire year. But that is just the terminology, but the accountant, and we've passed it by our town council as well, and had them speak to our town accountant, and that was the best way to put it in.
Let me elaborate on that a little bit. Basically, in order to start up a capital line item, which is what this is, this is taking money that got brought into the general fund and then appropriating it to a capital line item. In order to establish a capital line item, you need a town meeting vote. So if, if in fact, we don't vote on this, that 165 sits in our general fund until the accountants go through and establish it into our free cash account at the end of the year. What this does is this allows us to take that money from that general fund and put it into a capital line item with the town meeting vote that's necessary to do that.
Okay. In other words, we're not actually raising and appropriating?
No, we're just appropriating the money we already have.
Because that to me means tax money.
Nope.
And if we're going to raise and appropriate, that's my question.
Nope, this is money that's currently being held at ransom, if you will, in our general fund, and we want to put it into a capital line item so we can use it for capital expenses.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay. Good question. Mr. Sorel.
Richard Sorel, 39 Grove Street, Millville, former chair of the Finance Committee. This, this article puts the town, is a, is a good thing for the town. If you all can remember, in years past, when it came time to fund capital items, we either came or not, came out of the ambulance receipts or it came out of free cash. This, this article puts us on track to look to the future and not use free cash ambulance receipts for everything that comes down the line that the town needs. It establishes a fund, and obviously, we're going to try to grow that fund as, as time goes by, to be able to project our needs into the future much better than we have in the past. It's a much better way to fund capital, so I think this is a good thing for the town. I hope you support it.
Anyone else? Questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
Go look here, 106 Grove Street, Millville.
Please, may I have a speaking of the mic, please?
Thank you, guys. All right, go look here, 106 Grove Street, if you don't want me to end up long enough. But anyway, the only concern I have about this is the, establishing this is an incredible idea, I totally agree with this, okay? What are the parameters that are placed around this though? So I think you know where I'm getting at, right?
I know exactly what you're getting at, and, and I'm just going to explain this on the next comment, anyway. Basically, because it's establishing a capital account, it's under the same rules and bylaws of any capital expense. So there's a lifespan requirement, and there's a money threshold requirement in our bylaws for any capital expense. So it's covered by that.
And it's not one or two people who will make the decision, it's has to go before the Board?
Would have to go before the Capitol.
All right, because I can see somebody disappearing real quick if there are not restrictions.
Right, there are most certainly restrictions on the spending of the money.
Mr. Legary?
Yes.
The capital budget is also in the annual town meetings when they allot that money out, so it's going there, but when they decide where it's going to go, you're going to have another vote on town meeting floor for that.
But there's also things that happen unexpectedly, and you've got to account for them, such as the town hall being considered off limits, and things like that.
But at the annual town meeting every year, capital planning puts forth their budget for the townspeople to vote on.
Anyone else would like to ask a question? There being none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Article Number Four, fund the additional BMR school assessment to see if the town will vote to tran, to transfer $40,000 from the stabilization account to be added to the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee fiscal year 2017 budget voted under Article 11 of the May 9th, 2016 Annual Town Meeting or take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Brian Pacheco, I understand you have a motion.
I move that the town vote to transfer $40,000 from the stabilization account to be added to the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee fiscal year 2017 budget, voted under Article 11 of the May 9th, 2016 Annual Town Meeting.
Petuals made by Mr. Brian Pacheco, second.
I'm second.
All o'leat, seconded. Any questions?
Keith Boone, 224 Chestnut Hill Road. I probably should have asked this question earlier. Can somebody please explain to me the function of the stabilization fund?
It's our savings account.
Okay. Okay. Paul, you want to take it?
Sure. Basically, the stabilization-
You're the finance manager.
Yeah, I know.
You're getting the big bucks.
Thanks a lot. I want 100% raise this year. All right, basically, the stabilization fund is our, is our savings account. It's, it's basically, I think some people have called it a rainy day fund, if you will. When we reach a point where our tax levy and our other incomes don't meet what our absolute needs are, then with the required two-thirds vote from the town meeting, we can take money from our stabilization account to fund these expenses.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. It is required two-thirds vote.
Everybody who voted in the affirmative are ayes, stand up. Have a seat. Those who voted nay are opposed to it, or no, please stand up. Two-thirds vote. And while we're at it, I just want to remind the meeting members that in our bylaws, the town moderator can take a vote and declare a majority as a two-thirds vote, the same way he does as a majority vote, okay? So if I hear enough ayes out there and a very weak nay, I can declare it as two-thirds vote according to our bylaws, just so you'll know. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to amend the Millville Bylaws, Chapter 30, Town Elections and Meetings, subsection 30-2, by adding the following new paragraph E. E. The moderator shall annually appoint a deputy moderator for one-year term to commence on July the 1st. The deputy moderator shall preside in the absence of the moderator or when the moderator recuses himself, or to assist the moderator when the number in attendance or physical layout of the rooms require in the judgment of the moderator and initial moderator. In the absence of the moderator or deputy moderator, the temporary moderator shall be elected from the voters for that meeting only and according to General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 14, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Mrs. Wayne, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that the town vote to amend the Millville Bylaws, Chapter 30, Town Elections and Meetings, Subsection 30-2, by adding the new paragraph as written in the town meeting warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Wayne made the motion, Mr. Sorel revoked, so seconded. So that you know, I think it's pretty well self-explanatory, folks. If for some reason I can't come down sick, can't attend a meeting, the deputy moderator will take over. If, for example, and I've only seen it one time, maybe twice, that we fill this room up and we have to spill over into the cafeteria, we need another moderator, a person in that room, so that he and I have two-way communication, so the people can see what's going on in this room, and we can hear what's going on in that room, going on. Also, if I feel that I want to speak as a private citizen on something, I can refuse myself, ask the deputy moderator to take over for that particular article, that I can come down to the floor and speak my mind. I have yet to do that, but I reserve my right. That's pretty well what it is. Most towns do have it. At our annual town, Massachusetts Moderators Association Conference this year, it was highly recommended that those who don't have one, get one. So in that, that's why we asked for the article to be put on the warrant. We have a second, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any other questions, concerns? There being none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. I was notified that this article's going to be changed a little bit, and it will be in the motion. I'm going to read the whole article, because that's exactly what you have, and then we'll explain what the changes are. Article Six, provide non-criminal disposition of zoning bylaws, or zoning violations, to see if the town will vote to amend the Millville Bylaws, Chapter 100, Zoning, Section 100-607, by adding the following sentence after the first sentence. As an alternative means of enforcement, a non-criminal penalty of $300 per violation will be imposed pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 21D, for violations of any section of this zoning bylaw, except that the non-criminal penalty for violations of Section 100-501 signs shall be $50, fines shall be $50 per day as set forth in Section And further, to see if the town will vote to amend the Millville Bylaws, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 1-3, by adding the following after the last line of that section. Chapter 100, zoning, except, 100-501, signs, $300 a day, building inspector, or take any other action relative thereto. Mrs. Wayne, I think you have a motion?
I do. I move that the town vote to amend the Millville Bylaws, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Sections 1-3, by adding the following after the last line of that section. Chapter 100, zoning, except, Section 100 through 501, signs, $300 per day, building inspector.
Sir, second.
Second.
Mrs. Wayne made the motion, and Roland Barrett is seconded. Okay? It made it kind of easy. If you look at the article, go down to where you see it's the third line from the, or it's the second line from the bottom, it says this last line of that section, okay? Cross out everything from section all the way up to the top. All we're voting on is that Chapter 100, zoning, except, Section 100 to 105, signs, $300 a day, building inspector, or take any other action relative that too. That's the only thing that we're voting on, okay? Questions? Everybody understand it? Anybody who doesn't understand it or want to explain more?
Sure.
I think that, you want to answer that?
Sure. Sure. I would be pleased to do that. In actually trying to do enforcement in this community, which we already have a zoning bylaw, and we have a general bylaw, one which articulates non-civil criminal penalties when someone is in violation of a zoning bylaw, and that's already set up to $300 per day. The one thing that we don't have is that that particular amount is not listed in our general bylaw section in which we have a set specific amount, like a dog license, like a violation for a sign violation, $50. And all we're doing is making it consistent and putting it in that first provisional section of our general bylaw. This was a recommendation from town council, in particular, to allow the town, zoning enforcement officer and our building commissioner, when they go out and they want to issue a non-criminal violation fee, that it's actually set and codified like all the other fees in town. So that's all it's doing, is making sure of that, and that the public knows that when that's a violation, it's not of a sliding scale, it's not, it is that particular amount.
Okay. Everybody understand that? Okay? Okay? There being no other questions, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, it is a vote, I so declare. Article 7.
Article 4.
Yeah, Article 7.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, who's speaking?
Did you just vote, did you just vote on your vote, the motion to amend the article? Or you voted on the whole article?
No, we voted on the, on the motion itself. Article 7, establish speed limit, safety zones, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17C, which will allow the Board of Selectmen to establish speed limits of 20 miles per hour in a thickly settled or business district, and to accept the provisions of the General Law, Chapter 90, Section 18B, which would allow the Board of Selectmen to establish designated safety zones with speed limits of 20 miles per hour, or take any other action in relation thereto. Barrett, maybe you have a motion?
I do, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17C, which would allow the Board of Selectmen to establish speed limits of 25 miles per hour in a thickly settled or business district, and to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 90, Section 18B, which would allow the Board of Selectmen to establish designated safety zones with, with speed limits of 20 miles per hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Barrett made the motion, Ms. Wayne seconded it. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Oh, you're nice people. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
It is a vote, I so declare. The ayes have it. I've learned to make her wait a little bit. Mrs. Wayne?
I moved to dissolve the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made to dissolve the warrant by Mrs. Wayne, seconded by Mr. Barrett and Mr. Revoto, just to get out of here. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The warrant has been adjourned to be dissolved, and the meeting is adjourned, yes, wait, hold on, vote. Hold, hold, hold on, vote. Wait.
Regarding the opposing side of these town meetings, I know you have the electronic billboard out front of the fire station. I live in Chestnut Hill, as do many of us. If I'm going to Blackstone or Uxbridge, I don't come through the center of town. If I'm going through Slaters Hill, I go straight. Rarely go down 1 through 120, so I don't know if there's a possibility of putting that sign at the intersection, or being sure that it's on the bulletin board in front of the police station, because I think there are many of us who probably never even see that sign, may not have even known that this meeting was taking place tonight. Just an observation.
So, I want to answer that specific question that has come up. I have personally taken on the task of seeing about going and having some A-Brings signs made up, one for each entrance into the town. At one time, Mr. John Dean, our highway surveyor, had enough signs that he would post on all entrances into town, notifying town, special town meeting or annual town meeting. Over the years, they have been lost, destroyed, or whatever. So I've taken it upon myself, I want to go try and get those signs made up, so that in the future, we can post them, if we come in from Mendon, if we come in from North Smithfield, from Blackstone, from Uxbridge, from Bellingham, wherever, and have those signs posted, so we have a better notification of our special and annual town meetings. We're also working very hard on trying to get it onto the, get our cable back up and running for the town.
It is, it is. Cable's up and running.
Okay, so that if you have cable, and I know a lot of people don't have cable charter, we're trying to get that, you know, on, on the charter so that it comes up all the time, so they can notify. It's been a challenge to get our newspapers, or local newspapers, which we have none, basically, to run the notifications of our special and annual town meetings, but we are trying, and we'll try to do a better job of that.
Thanks, Mr. Barrett.
You're welcome.